County Commission have been receiving both written and verbal comments for nearly two years. These comments will be entered into the minutes of both October 10th and October 17th meetings. Thank you for your attendance. If you are a resident that... You may come forward and speak.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Gray. My husband Russell and I live at 1946 1400 North. We are within the proposed project boundary. We are third generation landowners by our family farm. And strongly feel that the wind project is not suited... Not suited for nor should be considered for our densely populated rural landscape. It will cause too many conflicts and divisions in our community. According to the county's zoning office, there are 502 property owners within a thousand feet of the factory. And there are currently 75 proposed windows. Thus it creates 75 neighbors getting paychecks. And we cannot blame anyone for taking advantage of the window company. And 427 landowners within the proposed factory getting nothing but the negative side of massive turbulence. Talk about creating conflict between neighbors with a one to four ratio of cats to have nots. And the real kick in the teeth is this power of the hard to use in Dixie County. It will be sold on the grid to the highest bidder. Another case to freedom and bail with taking the decision making process. Another way to look at it is that the 502 property owners within the boundary of the project represent 2.7% of the total population of Dixie County, which is 18,402 according to the census 2020. Out of these 502 property owners, only 75 get windows. This amounts to .41% of the county population. Less than half of 1.7%. Thus once again, .41% of the population will receive lease checks. And 99.59% of Dixie County residents get nothing but the side of massive turbulence spending 24 hours a day with all the neighbors. These include the sound factor, shadow filter, 24-hour moving blades, property evaluation, cellphone interference, and extra traffic during construction and throughout maintenance for years to come. Also building something that has already been talked about in the past 24 years. This is not a project for our local county. Thank you.
My name is Dan Hope. I want to say I live at 15 East Hope Avenue, which is a Hope township, you know, on Brown and Ridge Township. And we have these are properties doing now. But the reason I'm here is because of the economic opportunity that will be afforded to the 25th county of the millions of dollars that this will generate over the years. This is not going to be just to the leasees or those that have a current. Everyone in Dixon County is going to benefit. It may not be directly, but indirectly will benefit. The economic impact is too hard to assess. I am in favor of this. And I hope it can pass. That said, I hope everyone will respect the decision of the committee and gracefully move on with their life.
My name is Dale Bateson. I live on a family farm at 1341 800 Avenue in Hope. I'm speaking in support of the Wind Farm Project. A few years ago, our family was honored by Dixon County Farm Bureau for having its since been a father. My great-grandfather, Holmes, says the farm that we currently live on. He served in the Indian Army and enlisted at the 86th. He learned to be a woman in civil war and suffered a leg injury and stayed within the rest of his entire life. I don't keep what passion against Wind Farm, and I don't keep those passions forth. I respect your hands, and I sympathize with the only board that had my decision. The county to the south of us and the Wind Farms on the north in Paterson, but it's county. I have talked with their farmers that have told me that these Marion County farmers have come into our county and outbid local farmers for farmland and leasing of farms. They can and will have developed and keep moving to work and spending more money in Dixon County than Dixon County farmers can afford. I don't blame anyone for goodness, but the Wind Farm will definitely help Dixon County farmers financially. I've heard many arguments against Wind Farm, and a few of them has America. Foreign ownership is what we turn out to hurt. Most of us own smartphones, own smartphones that are producing foreign taxes. And we don't think twice about using them every day. From our farm, we can see the flash and red lights on the Wind in town, in Marytown. That's not bothering me seeing the lights with new technology coming on with the Wind Farm. We didn't hope the lights only come on when the plane gets close to the house. The main thing I hear from most people is that they think that towers are an eyesore. There are many other things that would consider an eyesore, not a wind tower. I have been told that the Wind Farm is bad because many people do not use publicization. It will be transported to the state. I donate blood to American Red 12 for us. The last two donations have gone to Houston, Texas. Does this mean it's a bad thing if it doesn't stop being used in Canada? Years ago in 1930, there was fierce opposition to the telephonic rezubur project. Many farmers couldn't lose their farms at the public wind church. Local farmers fled for many years successfully until it was closed in 1951. Many towns including Manhattan, Lake City were severely flooded. The flood that kept her for good people less than twice as many farmers. The terrorism of the political system were important. Entertaining the innocent is a concern for the security of our nation. When my great-grandfather settled in Dixon County, it was partly a difficult fight for his country that believed in. Flattery rights was part of that. The fight is not to test something with an eyesore. The fight is because you believe in your country and its survival. Even looking for the future is the one you do to make it better than it is. City Fire, self-identified here 1300 Avenue. Four years ago, we leased some land to a man who had a purpose of building a Wind Farm in Dixon County. We feel that there would be a, from the past revenue from the Wind Farm, could be a significant economic benefit and value that we have. And we will respect your decision like the planning board, the administration, and the commission. And we'd like to call that a law. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Rackett, I live at 525 Oak Road, the south of Hope. I have lived there for more than 40 years. Since moving here, I have never felt... Until around 2018. Since 2018, I've felt numerous earthquakes. I live about eight miles from Diamond Vista Wind Turbines. Now, I know our conspiracy theorists may not bring the following, but it seems more in consequence since Diamond Wind Turbines have put in the... Put in earthquakes have become numerous. As you can see on the sheets that I have given you, if you look at the page one, it shows from January 1st, 1910 to January 1st, 2016. That a hundred, that's 106 years. We have exactly two earthquakes within 62 miles of each, which we hope. Notice the red dots on the paper. One was in 1981, down by 14th Avenue, 2015, up by Junction City. Now on page two, we will see that from January 1st to 2016 to January 1st, 2018, we had a total of five earthquakes within 63 miles of each. Of those five, only three were within 31 miles of Hope. And you can see by the red dots, those are the three. Those three were up around Salina area. Now on page three, we will see from January 1st, 2018 to October 17th, '24. That's a little over six years. Hope has experienced 143 earthquakes within 63 miles of Hope. And of those, 132 earthquakes within 31 miles of Hope. Notice again the red dots and where they're located. Do you see the cluster of red dots by Hope? Those are the epicenter of the earthquake. Now on page four, this is a close-up map since 2018, showing where the epicenter of each earthquake was. As you can see, they're directly located inside the boundary of the project. So they are proposing that you allow them to dig at 123 30-foot deep holes, fill in each concrete, and then attach 169-foot wide granite stick that is 24 hours per day to that base. Yes, directly and directly, and this is the earthquake epicenter. Now, I'm not a rocket scientist or a geologist, but does that sound like a good idea given the earthquake that just showed up? That had just started and was curious if Diamond Vista Wind Turbines were putting in 10 miles away. And for $660,000, they claim that it's just in the county. That's against a place that just comes from the damn husband's blood.
Oh, Thomas Palmer, would you grant him up the candle? Well, I'm a grandfather. Thank you. I don't know who's that father, but I just am glad that you had to hear your first question. California. The thing, in California, we do have these thoughts. We're clustered together. And we're a place for everybody to experience the wind. The San Antonio, the Hattieskey, and also the... Why are they stringing them out across the prairie here is beyond me. It takes 60 acres to run thousands of dams. I am worried.
I'm Vivian Blake, and I am going to ask on my behalf, there is a figure at cindyhurrycain.com to speak on his behalf as his supporters' guild. He wanted me to express to you, the planning committee, that he is 100% in support of the Wind Farm Project. He has lived on our family farm for 72 years, and my son Caleb became the fifth generation owner of this farm. There have been many years that my family has struggled to make any peace. And we are very passionate about forming a reward. We believe moving forward with this project will show Dixon County's aggressiveness and that businesses and industries will want to come here. This will create more opportunities for jobs, help grow our local economy, and bring more kids to our schools. Even the creation of the Wind Farm will bring more people to South Texas and County, bringing an influx of farmers. Union Pacific will help all survivors then, and many of those employees live here in towns taken through county. Workers will be staying here, eating at our restaurants, supporting our local businesses. This is beneficial to many of your neighbors and friends. Did you know that there are currently four colleges in the state that offer degrees in wind technology? Holy and Cloud County College, Paystate, and HU. Paystate's Electrical and Computer Engineering Department is working on wind and solar projects, while the Wildcat Wind Power Corporation competes annually in the U.S. Department of Energy collegiate wind competition. With an average salary of $61,700, and the yield is expected to grow 60% in the next 10 years, we are always pushing for kids to go and investigate. Here's another great opportunity. Misinformation is being spread like wildfire regarding wind turbines and farms. No, wind turbines cannot cause cancer. No, they do not interact cell on earth. If you're concerned about the bats, there's an ultrasonic acoustic deterrent that can be installed. Wind turbines are responsible for approximately 3.63% of bird deaths. About 1.2 million. While cats, buildings and parks combined are 3.2 billion of the bee. That's 97%. A study in Norway found that if the turbines are cleaned in a highly durable glass, it decreases the number of bird deaths by 70%. Noise? Me speaking to you right now at 60 decibels is more than what the output of the turbine would be at 40.
30 seconds.
The gearbox is engineering, there can be sound, it can be sound, it can be buffers, bug attacks. I'm going to skip ahead. For those of you concerned about changing the landscape, where is the owl from the west toward the nutrient invention towers, substation on Quail River? We are constantly evolving and changing to the way we get our energy flow. Why are we utilizing this natural resource of which we haven't invented yet? I live with my dad, he uses one for the next generation. He wants to make sure people will embrace new history and move forward, don't you?
I'm speaking on my dad's...
Is that... I'm going to speak on somebody else's effect.
Did you hear that last?
If you're...
Yes.
Yes, there was. Last one.
You know, they didn't allow me to tell what side you're on.
A few people that spoke at the last one were against it, so don't tell me what side I'm on. Sir, go ahead and speak.
My name is Ken, I live in... 75... I've lived in there for 50 years. And I'm opposed to this project here for several reasons. About... Most of the passion of the town. Frankly, I think of the windmill industry. The mining, southern edge of my property to the windmills during the period. And I think it might be a lot of stuff. The windmill market, when it began, it's sort of... That was just growing, I suppose. And frankly, I do respect people who live in the wild. Our country's life is described as rolling very thunderous, well, it's a beautiful. But I share that one, and have myself or other people have worked on that. Inside of... I really... Part of the calling of life. It's... People should be an S for the wind. See those windmills off the table there. Such people who don't like... Even on impact, it's very costly. Very sad, and everything are moving last Thursday. That was $60,000 over the same like 30 years, about $2,000 per year. That's like 50 people. That whole time, I'm... This is Rob, like... 2017, partner of my ear, 22th Avenue, Census, or Census. So that's only at 100...
30 seconds.
...dollars. That's what it amounts to compared to $200,000. It's not that much. And as I say, in essence, we've been forcing hundreds and hundreds of people every day to purchase and move to the one that I have to focus. And people...
Mr. Chairman, could you please just, I think, probably repeat the, uh, who were, who were actually wanting to hear from?
We are wanting to hear from residents within the limit of the project that have gotten notification of hearing.
And add all of it, all of what I said.
Please do not give comment if you received a notice of hearing, have already given comment at a previous meeting on the 10th, and you did not receive a notice or reside outside of Dixon County, and you spoke on behalf of another person and used up your three-minute allotment. Once the commission has heard from all those individuals that received the notice but did not comment on the 10th, the public comment the public comment period will be closed and no further comments written or verbal will be accepted. Please be respectful of all speakers, outbursts, and interruptions. Interruptions of all speakers, including the applicant, staff of the commission, will not be tolerated, and you will be escorted out of the building if disruption continues. The meeting will be adjourned and premises vacant. It does, it must be pointed out that both staff and county commission have been receiving both written and verbal comments for nearly two years. These comments will be entered into the minutes of both the October 10th, October 17th meeting.
My name is Tony, 2238 1000 Avenue. And I'm here to support the windmills for three reasons. One is myself issue three. This three-dollar coin is 200 miles to 400. Okay, number two is taxes. I'm also tired. I sell the heat counter for, we're going to have to raise taxes, raise taxes, raise taxes because the rock and everything else is going up. The third reason and most important reason to me is, uh... I have a son who lives in HOA, which is a homeowners association. And that's where they tell you what you can or cannot do on your property. And I hope that Dixon County doesn't turn into a big HOA where people decide what we can or cannot do on property. So it's a matter of freedom. Even if I didn't have, so if we had windmills going on in the place, I think I'd have favored for that reason all. Because I have neighbors who have had dairy farms, or did they stink? But I knew they had a living home at Dairy Farm. So I didn't open my mouth and try and shut that dairy down. Thank you.
Well, I'm not a speaker, so here goes that. Cindy Gray, I'm living in Hope right on the 59th. I'll be right here and view all this. So, I'm a third-generation Hope community member. I do not want turbines, allow no homes. I have read through the handout from the last meeting, which is driven in a favorable manner for a minute. Hurry your paperwork, two primary questions in review are number 21. To answer those are simple, no. It is not in spirit and intent of economic development and livelihood provisions in the comprehensive plan and the plan. The health, safety, and general welfare of the community outweighs the rights for the 550-plus workers in front of us. We know how things are without them, but you cannot guarantee the health, safety, and general welfare at home. This is why Wobomsey County, Harvard County, Sedley County, Shawnee, and McPherson County fail you. We need you to... Thank you.
My name is Ken Grackey. I'm not a Dixon County resident, but I did get a letter. Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah, if you received a letter and as long as you're, yeah, you received a letter, you're on the line here. One, one person per address.
My name is Ken Grackey. I'm based at 5733 Grand Avenue, Manhattan, Kansas. My wife Nancy and I, after 60-plus years of farming and living in Dixon County and Hope area, we realize the dream of a goal of ours. We purchased a house on a small lake in Manhattan, where we could retire, build a fishing, attend sporting events at the ASU. We were able to achieve this through hardcore and the ability to recognize it, the opportunity. We now see an opportunity for the town of Hope in Dixon County, a place that we continue to have farming interests, farm members of, and a citizen with passion too. In my lifetime, I've watched the community of Hope decline from a thriving community that supported four gas stations, oil, oil store, furniture store, meat locker, company dealership, barber shop, drugstore, food delivery stores, food hall, and many other small businesses. The next thing to close will more than likely be our school, which is experiencing decreasing enrollment. We all know what happens then. You end up with a co-op that sells gas. Just one has to look at Carlton and Navarre. Now the opportunity is coming to change our direction. A company that's offered to invest hundreds of millions of dollars in the community. Does this industry come with risks? Yes. All of those opportunities, there are some risks. On behalf of the expected permanent workforce that's settling the area, it could greatly change our school enrollment and bring a little energy, pardon the term, back to the community. Just maybe a future Hope High graduate that designs a better turbine, that's more efficient, quieter, more recycling. The negativity coming from those opposed to the problem with project believes that every problem they're going to have, such as making everyone sick. Well, I've heard cell phones malfunctioning, and most of us in this room don't use them. I think the word company, your good hope, and no money will be left to dismantle and back to their useful lot. Most landowners that I know would just get out the porch, turn on the sticks here, 30 minutes, fill up a couple of days, scrap them, and out. So for 30 minutes, we have all these family buddies to take care of, and that's in our property. Still, I do complain about the being an eyesore. We're sure that the pot on the cattle block. I saw a project sunrise and sunset. I think the sun will still come up and set. You need to give that a higher to be older.
Time.
I'm Nancy Grackey, and I received my own letter, because I am self-employed.
Okay. Isn't the same, isn't the same address?
We live at the same, I tell my own property in Hope County, we have...
They used to take the...
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, they're...
My name is Nancy Grackey, I'm a property owner in Hope County. I do reside at 5733 Grand Avenue, Manhattan. I wrote you a letter about two weeks ago. Remember it? I thought I would defend my position publicly and expand this a little when our observation came in during the class. The fear of change. Change is inevitable. Do we want to lead our county into the future or have it be left behind? Energy production landscape changes every day. U.S. electrical grid is outdated and dangerously vulnerable. Do we want to be part of this solution even if ever so small? Let's sit back and live in theory. Sometimes scientists believe that renewable energy will slow global warming and improve our air quality. Who knows? In a hundred years, ladies at Turning Point's climate change, a special-grade Wind Farm could be added to the national record of historical places. Our recent presentation with Mike Stire in Atlanta. Landowners in this room who lease their property might be different business rooms or our individual farms every day. We don't harbor feelings of balance of other persons' death. There are plenty of successful people here who do not farm or race to have. We want everyone to be the best they can be. We made a decision years ago to lease our property as an investment in the future of Dixon County. And we have always invested in ourselves, our equipment, our land. I know you have to ask between the risks of this vulnerability, the cost of management, and impact on our environment, and the revenue that the appointment generated value brings our county. I ask you, what other industries are knocking on our door to company? Why not let the Nell join Kiboga as another foreign-owned company in supporting our economy with good paying jobs? If you vote directly and deny a conditional connection, some will leave with joy, with their... some will leave the joy with their livelihood. They have desperately tried to convince you that our motives to support it only benefit us. It's definitely not true. They refuse to acknowledge the common root深层 for this entire county. If you believe in them, then there's no amount of discussion and debate that will change the law. We propose to study the lives we're missing out on opportunity and improve this county with a new industry that leads to minimal, strategic impact on the majority of residents. Please put your hands up. Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna say these instructions one more time because we keep getting more people coming in. This is for the comment, public comment. Please do not give comment if you have received a notice of hearing and have already given comment at the previous meeting on the 10th, or you did not receive a notice or reside outside Dixon County and spoke on behalf of another person and used up your three-minute allotment. Once the commission has heard from those individuals that received a notice but did not comment on the 10th, the public comment period will be closed and no further comments written verbal will be accepted. Thank you.
I'm Court Elliot, and I received a letter and I'm advised that this question is critical. And over the past few sessions, there has been a lot of discussion regarding the project being the first, when projects are presented to Dixon County in regards to the farmers that will support as well as the money that it will generate in our economy over the life of the project. However, I'm going to discuss some other benefits that a project is going to bring other folks do not know about. I am the director of the Little Lion Stinning Club. We started this help in Dixon over a year and a half ago in a great community. We are a pilot plant. We, the organization, depend on the great community of Hope, grants, and of course, families to help us keep us going. We have been fortunate enough to have a building that we grant from the Hope School. However, it is a stationary shelter. We do not have a storm shelter. The state does not allow us to remove the children from the facility and take them across the street in case of tornado or severe weather. We have had a duty conversations within Hope about the possibility of building a storm shelter for the children so that we can have a safe place for our children in the event of severe weather. They are very open to this and would love to support this project. There could be... There are also the other opportunities that we would like to discuss with in Hope in the future in regards to the Little Lion Stinning and the community of Hope in the future. These are things that folks do not realize that in Hope, it has partnership with the communities that they are in. They support the communities they're in. They become a part of the public community, just in addition to the pilot program that they've already agreed to with Dixon County. As the director of Little Lion Stinning Club, a resident of Hope and in Dixon County farmer's life, I fully support the Hope wish with the project and all the opportunities, economic hope, that it brings to our community.
Thirty seconds.
Especially to our small community in southern part of the county, where it is heated tremendously. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. I'm Archie Pickle. My address is 1446 700 F. After attending last Thursday's meeting, one concern from the opposition was power producers will not even be standing in Dixon County. Sorry, folks, not the time for power producers. Let me plant this seed. A hard-working, indebted Dixon County farmer takes his wheat to the local elevator. The elevator sells the wheat. It goes to a flour mill and gets bran into flour. The flour is made into bread. The bread is sold for retail. When that Dixon County farmer and his family buys bread at his local store, does he... Does that bread have any wheat from Dixon County? No, but he still buys it and enjoys it too. Now I'm going to move along and focus on economic factors. During 2007 through 2017, I was the manager of the only gas station in being a store. For around ten years, Dixon County had several projects happening in the area. The two that come to my mind are the TransCanada Pipeline, the pipeline project associated with Tri-Canly Telecom. Our small-town gas station busts and drives, and we had to hire even more employees to keep up with the demand that these projects provide. This is why Hannah believes for the area businesses why the construction phase is going on. Also, my husband and I have leased our land to the wind farm. But we will not be giving any of these work turbines on our land, but we strongly see what the 660,000 per year for ten years will provide the future of the community in all of Dixon County. The money for the project will be for all of Dixon County, not just the land owners with the turbines. Thank you for listening and all the time you have given away for your families. But remember, your country will benefit too. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Candy here, both of the 1022 Big Road. We are a small business owner and former... My baby's there. I'm all for advancement, and we have to actively add oppositions to our business. That's just a given. It is what it's going to do to my farm, my road, my driveway, because these are construction building right across the way from my house. It is what it is. And I think that this can be a good thing, and it can be a bad thing, just depends on how it's handled by all those involved. Me and our oldest, Jeremy Goodwin, the biographer that he says he's not necessarily against wind energy, but is very concerned on how they affect the radar, especially in the radio hour. When a tornado rolls through here at night, you cannot see it or see it on a national radar system. How are you protecting it? What do we do now? I mean, it's... It's fifty-fifty. Like I said, I think if it's all handled properly, everybody will come out of health.
Hello. I am Joyce Sloan. 1077 Pink Road. And I think in two days, I'll be sold, and you are not in your property. So I have lived without electricity, without running water, and living on a dirt road, which became impossible to track on. I'm just getting divorced. And if you wanted more chastity, dirt in the vehicle, you hadn't had the money. So for progress, I never had to switch on the light for electricity. And besides that, when you want to heat water in a fire pit, it's blocked, was blocked with a fire underneath it. We could change the bed and have one more. And also, to do our laundry, we can have automatic. So I am for progress and technology. Besides that, we can have a telephone. I have a telephone, dude. So, and we could call a doctor. When my younger sister was born, come and get a doctor. So we were changing, had a telephone, and had bricks and stuff. And also, besides that, harden at least my lemon to for five hours, be careful, oil to infer, collect the poles. I figure this is missing work. And once my people are better at living life than I have in my early years. And besides that, I go back and thought about all of these deficits that were lost in Hope. There was two car dealerships, a lumberyard, a lockup plant, ladies and men's luggage rack, a grocery store, a insulin parlor, drugstore, a motherhood store, three gas stations, three doctors, one dentist. And I'm probably going to be a turnover. But I know people don't have dementia. And what about... They are bursting for the gas stations, a bus stop. And it's a great high school, a great school. And a whole twenty-two years ago, and a rich son, and seven churches, and lost seven churches there. And they're gone. They lost two grocery stores, a bank, a school, and also churches. I know there's...
Time. Time, ma'am. Ma'am, 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 ma'am. Time. Time.
You want these communities to...
Time.
I'm Detective 27th Avenue, Dixon County. I'm a 24-year Army veteran, retired before 2021. My wife and I raised on farms in Reno County, Kansas. Growing up there before, went to the west of Bon Fish. And our fathers taught us a... Be good steward of the land. After retiring from the Army, we chose to stay in Dixon County because it's a beautiful place. It's been a great place to raise our family. It's somewhat conservative value that are getting harder to find where you live in the United States. I am not an expert on electronics or the power grid. I am an expert on Kansas geography and Kansas terrain. As a professional pilot, I fly all over the state. I will fly the low altus from 500 to 2500 feet from the ground. I routinely fly over wind farms in Marion, Victoria, and Parisville, Seneca, Elkhorn, all the way down to Pratt Harbor, Shenee, all the way west to Dodge City, Hayes. I have been deep in the air on the expansion of wind projects over the last fifteen years. I will tell you that the size and physical impact of these machines cannot be overstated. These man-made structures are visible from 25 miles during the daytime and over 50 miles when lights are visible at night. They're dominating the Kansas landscape. These machines require thousands of tons of concrete, miles of underground cable, and hundreds of miles of high-pitched transmission lines. At the current rate of wind expansion, in 20 years from now, if you live in rural Kansas, I believe you will not be able to throw a rock and hit a winter, not hit a winter. I am against the construction of winter reserve in my home in Dixon County for all the reasons you mentioned here in this hearing. Kansas is my home, and it's sad to see to watch my home be transformed into nothing more than a wind power plant that mostly benefits people who don't live here, don't share much of their use, and don't turn out my way in life. Finally, I am not against the rural energy that's clearly unpredictable, but the greed-driven economy in which these companies connect business all over our state is unethical to state release. It is obvious that this $280 billion oil company wants us to grant this permit before a due diligence that they could plead against constituents of this county, even though it was that... This project not only affects people who live inside the least area, this project affects the entire county. I know that in five, ten, twenty years, someone might want to put a windmill in my backyard. Prospect of this does not make me happy. To this commission, you have a duty to the constituents of this county to deny the conditional use permit for the Hope Wind, Hope for Wind Energy Project.
Sir, what's your name again? I'm sorry.
The whole deal with this, when I was... Oh, say in mid-sixties, we had a navy that had first mercury light. It basically bits the county. Everybody, you know, mercury light, whatever. It wasn't such a neat deal. Now you can see mercury lights everywhere, creek light. They've expanded into LLD, LLD lights. And in turn, nobody takes much of that. These windmills might do the same thing in forty years. You know, nobody in Marion County is dying, got sick, or they can tell me. You can find anything on the internet if you look for it, positive or negative, it's out there. We're... We lease the land, and that's where we're going to stay today. Thank you.
I was... And my impression of this is the manner in which it was divested to my family. We represented that, explained this list of people that present people with us, and was like a list of everybody in our neighborhood, and indicated that all of those people had signed a lease already. And then we were quietly staring at those wind turbines, whether we signed for one or not. And that was deceptive because we found out later that both of those people had not signed, had actually not signed a contract. And that, I object to that manner in which we have this circumstance. And this is how we make a compact on people and their health. And I implore you, as representatives of your community, to vote no.
My name is Garcia. I recently moved back to Dixon County. I live at 2391 2000 Avenue. I can sell the farm with the coast during, I am set to prepare a core section of land, and it's proposed. So I'm going to have to, how is it right? How is it okay for the residents of Land of... To stand up here and they have the right to their land use? And then how they say the county, they basically write to the... To build, build... To use my land as I absolutely could do today, build a future home, agriculture business anywhere on the property today. But after the... The permit goes into effect, it shrinks that area down to nearly nothing. Then as they allow the county to write through, approach on my land. If this permit passes, this is current, means that it absolutely changes the way I can use the land, and how does that equal interference? They say no, no innate domain if it cannot not live and use my future land the way I want. It sure sounds like innate domain to me. This permit is presented before you, is a permit of free. We already need to know that the wind turbines are not offering the GFC. And the county didn't even go and get their full pilot payment. Many, if you look at what happened with the Nellie Marion County, all the money, it speaks volumes. Do not run my future and other young farmers' futures in this county needs to make this permit make a standard by which all other wind farm operate. This permit violates Dixon County's own mission statement. Basically, we summed up to welcome green plays for families and strengthening agriculture. Where none of the participating members cannot use their land and all of it to the same rights they had before for the permit. There is something to strength really wrong with telling people Dixon County is a great place to farm and grow a family. You might as well change the mission.
Thirty seconds.
Welcome to the land of corruption.
Ron, 1048 Highway 43. I live in Victoria, I live in Blaine, Kansas. But I come back to my old Dix County because I like it here. I've been farming with my dad and mom, George Love, for years. My husband and I have been married for over forty years. And we farm, we both... My husband and I have been married for over 40 years, and we farm, we both work, like I'm, we are all for the wind farm. Thank you.
Ma'am, what was your first name again? Ma'am, whoa, whoa. What was that first name again?
Dawn, D A W.
Okay.
I'm Arthur Meacham, I live in Hope, Kansas. I own property here in Kansas. I feature your service. Thank you for the opportunity to assist you. I'm a combat veteran, I'm a Vietnam hero. I managed to walk wearing American panties for nine years. I know a lot of people wearing Kansas. At the moment, maybe some conversation about the wind. What the points that I would like to make is, over 50 years, the people in Wyoming have supplied the fuel for electricity. And the people where the, the coal plants are, have produced the electricity in the way. Now, the National Health Institute has run, they have got these percentages out, and the schoolchildren in the vicinity of these, these law, where this coal plant, second graders, 6% over the nation are already starting to get respiratory diseases. In the fifth grade, 14%, it's 14%. Now, these people have been, for 50 years, have been, that's in sacrifices, so we can turn our switches on and off. It doesn't matter if we live in Wyoming, it does not matter if we live in northeast Kansas, or New York, or wherever, we're all Americans. And Americans are supposed to steward other Americans. It's not the way our constitution is, it's in the justice of the Bible. My daughter, I have family who live over the coal plant. I have two great-grandsons that haven't achieved the first book, along with grandchildren.
30 seconds.
Biggest thing that distresses me is, I live in Hope, I'm four miles from these windmills, and I have seen there for three years. They don't, that just comes back to mind. And it really distresses me to hear people say, well, we don't need that here. What about the people?
Time, time, time.
Hi, my name is Amy Jackson, and I live on 1770 14th Avenue. I've lived there for 22 years. I work in Dixon County, I raise all four of my children in Dixon County. Um, so I was a little shocked when I got a letter a couple of weeks ago that said the industrial wind turbine could be within a thousand feet of my farm that I worked so hard for. A thousand feet, I thought, what is that? That was for a quarter of a mile, but yet, two miles turns half. I'm like, what does this mean? And one of my children, who's been at home for another 10 years plus, um, is autistic and has sensory issues. So I looked into the non-ahkali and the infrasound that the industrial wind turbines can cause. And the effects of the central nervous system becomes overly sensitized, especially with these children with those issues. The symptoms that, that my daughter, which she's single, who has been, uh, last minute of her mind, from my farm, from her swingset, from her trampoline, where she rides in our gate field with her pony, they will cause chronic noise, stress, anxiety, depression, cognitive dysfunction, and disdopamine. Um, you were just handed studies, numerous research studies from doctors and research showing these symptoms, that the inaudible and infrasound from the industrial strength wind turbine can cause. One of my neighbors said to me, just move, just move. I've been there 22 years, I've raised my children there, I work in Dixon County, I pay my taxes in Dixon County, and now I have a child that I care for, for her, her cognitive development, because her school that she goes to will also be within a thousand feet of the industrial strength turbines. And so I asked, why is it okay for it to be within a quarter of a mile of my farm, of my family home, that I've worked so hard to have, but yet, from the Dixon Town, it's two miles? I don't understand that. And I really don't understand that. And the paperwork that she got shows that, research shows those studies.
30 seconds.
That have been done. And I also asked, why is there no outline for non-ahkali infrasound in this initial permit? Why? And why should I just have to move and subject my child to these things that, that she won't be able to live with for another 10 plus years until she graduates from Dixon County School? Thank you for your time.
I'm 18, 13, 15, I'm a veteran, I'm a politician. I want to be the favorite winner of all, basically on my idea of the property, right? And it's not just the, uh, people of the power, the people who find the lease, if it stays up to wind, or. The farthest, most powerful, certainly, instead of, that's where people live, farther to being, to be.
Mr. Chairman, could you repeat again the, what you were wanting to, because I know some folks have come here?
Real quick, since we've had more people come in, please do not give comment if you've received a notice of hearing and have already given comment at the previous meeting on the tent, or last week on the tent, and you did not receive a notice or reside, go back. Please do not give comment if you do not, if you did not receive a notice or reside outside of Dixon County, and you spoke on behalf of another person, can you step through three minutes alone? Once the commission has heard from those individuals that have received the notice but did not comment on the tent, the public comment period will be closed until further comments written or verbal will be accepted. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Gray, um, and I'm interested in the thought of assault, and I, I recently graduated this year, and this is something that I'm very passionate about. I want our house to be, there is another unconditional use permit that provides adequate protection of non-participative families if the non-entirement, the right of protection, I think this is also requires a 30% release. In here, and in here, the multinational study, this is the pipeline group, chosen the minimum safety distance for residents is three miles, and the best is five miles. Now, the zoning commission has presented this pure research, the same study that was brought to attention, that was coming up to them, this zoning commission is serving the county up for legal action to be able to be taken from non-participative families against the county. Not the company, it's the county, but order of the conditional use permit is allowing E N V L at close to their homes, or I hope they are prepared to pay the value of their home, reach your right to medical expenses, and suffering more, more, if it is a generational form, that has to be abandoned, because these reports give value of this plan, are required in other, other counties, other decreasing counties, to the negative effect and list the health hazards affecting this C U P as presented today on the list, it poses such this coming up for future vital issues. As a young person living in this county my entire life, it is very important to me that the advantage, I do not want to have to abandon my farm, my roots and my world. I want a future for the people to have to abandon their future homes. This is something that is very important to the young people, the older people, and everyone else. So don't go, or interrise just for your benefit. Think about the surrounding families, think about everyone involved, it's not just you. Thank you.
I'm George, Mr. Fine. I work in Marion County, I work for the police office. I speak to numerous people, they, a lot of people that are not there to be made comment. Like, they'll do a hand, you end up in the bad zone, which is where all, I don't know, if you have any, we can take it. This will help, can work some of that, but. And something we can, then down, you got, third, and then to be on down again, and first lane, and it's clean, and normal, and quiet. I, I, I see no way to do it.
I'm embarrassed, I just have access to my own. Once this came out, for thinking about questions that I would like to have answered, hopefully under the same question, you want to. When, when is the time to actually, this is what I'm doing. Then on our, uh, that I think about, because Atlanta doesn't have a lease, I have one of those, what happened to the people? Who's gonna be, who's gonna take care of payments and left you on that thing once and now told you that I don't have a lease? But I'm gonna sit right, so, and who's gonna take care, they're in Kansas, and who's gonna put in the investment, it's, it's how, every time he's in Kansas, what, to go and manage, throws you on the top. So I'd like to know who's gonna fix it, and who's gonna be liable for that? I'm not, I get, you know, a piece of land on a property, do all people want to have to fix that, take care of it? So, not like, others have to be, they want to have to do the end of it in their life cycle, and they had to take it back, they should be responsible for that, I'm gonna fix that, I follow the order, we still have to do it, follow the way it's like that, follow that, thank you. I know that's ten years down the road, and you guys are worried about that, and I have some reason. And then, then the, the energy that they produce, when it won't invest, what if you don't, you don't stay in town, the others activate it. So if the energy doesn't stay in town, you don't get any tax control for it anyway, because power generation, and there's some voluntary payment, the real estate is the asset, that's what's always what, what is connected to that. Most people say there is, so, you know, it's, hopefully there's some, you, so, you guys should not be, without, we just.
Hi, my name is Sharon, I live in 122, we just started asking in Hope County. I think the main thing that I have to say about this, we are all in this decision, not because of our, these are decided of our government, but the decisions they made as far as what we need for electricity or anything to level right now. It is probably great to, with the first to be out of country. And I think that we have to have electricity. If we don't need to have electricity right now, to sponsor AI and all this ridiculous stuff that's been presented as, as America, and we've got to have it somehow. So if we start to come from this thought, what we want to do and what we want to allow, if we're allowed, so therefore, I think we really are talking about the thought of the whole two things. And I think that, since I've lived in these towns, I've lived in Marion, I've lived in Hope for over 22 years, I've seen these towns go down. And this is an opportunity, if I'm correct, that could benefit these towns. And I hope that we can come to this, thank you for this opportunity.
Grab.
Years, still feel, a lot of, actually, ground, this, uh, and, and a lot of, were grandpads, banging, uh, the dead grandparents, uh, it's, it's young, a little tall on her side, we see this ground, this, uh, way of life that they've had, uh, destroyed, people went to win farm, did they, did they have, uh, keep my whole bunch of notes to read, but, but a few things I, I want to talk about, contracts that these people are asking to sign. I buy it self that I've written a lot of contracts, and I've never made anybody sign a contract saying they can't tell anybody what they've done, and what they, they, that's, I don't understand that. Uh, this, this specifically, uh, this is all understanding, uh.
No, I guess, you know.
The thing is, if you talk to the doctors, they say they're not responding, responding.
That's why I have to.
That's the, the government's, uh, one, five, nine, thirty, dollars.
Okay.
I'm just glad that you said, yeah, you know, that it's, that it's not really doing anything to get the point. You know, pleasure? Did you, did you know?
Sir, sir, did you receive a, a notice, your last name was what again?
Yes, sir. And the farm is 1100 tank load, for Hope. But, uh, this, this community is 1360, 57. I went to work on a river, and I went to work on a river, five car ownership inherited two lumberyards, lost four, hard liquor, several, here, just. Now, we've got obligations, still got a hard liquor store, but he takes care, I mean, a lumberyard, and he takes care of the hard liquor stuff that people go to, but, there's a hospital that, well, you know, he, he didn't have to make enough face. But there's a hospital that, well, you know, he, he didn't have to make enough face for ordinary hard work. And what, what I said, I've been retired forty-two years. And, uh, since I retired. We, you know, we've got a house on the old world of the whip. And, uh, in Harry, he's just, uh. We kind of take it, but they don't, uh, it's, uh. We go, uh, space for them, but when we're there on this Union Road. There's probably a dozen dogs go by our place any morning. You need to go to the footballer at Kentucky City, or if you go to Addison. So, we're, we're kind of basic. And if we don't get something like the windmill in this area. Then just go down much faster. And that's, that's the story there, it doesn't matter. You can go around and, uh. Sad, that's all it is, it's plain sad. So this can lead to me, a little bit of whatever it takes. Have them look around.
Thirty seconds.
At the monthly thirteen forty-six law firm. We have people who live there for a while. We're gonna, see if you see the division coming about the X. We do support the, uh, wind farms and the long after we'll have, uh, all the township's working. Some lifeline that's more township. Don't just keep on that, they say, same thing with the after, which is a wind farm. Those, like a popular one to do with. You can all, I don't know if it's, uh, very, very, we support them all.
Hi, I'm Laura Morgan, eight seven seven Quayle River of Kansas. I'm seven, Jerry, two farmers, seeing the under fifty years old. I have a key long stick power lines and a new big power substation near my home. River G power lines have run through our property for years as well. I have a can of water pipeline going through my wife's house. Does all this stuff bother me? No. Am I afraid of it? No. Because it's closely monitored, and they do a big job, and they do it often. They always let, they know when they're coming. Do I still enjoy the sun and the vision stars and nature? Absolutely. Life is what you make of it, and God's beauty is all around me, and I choose to see and appreciate it. Where there is a will, there is a way. What I've gathered from all the opposition speeches is that I've only found one point they make that is true. They don't like the looks of the main towers, and that, my friends, is not a fact. It's a personal opinion, and it shouldn't bear any weight on this board's decision. The rest of the points they make, if debated politely and with common sense, could easily be put in the not-so-important category. You know, there's a lot more than emotions and getting on a family wagon and fighting all of this. Through all, through all of this fear, we really realize what is at stake for our county. We realize that turning down this project will set the stage for future developers, for people wanting to bring something into this county. Who really think they'll try. Do we think financial opportunities of this magnitude that will benefit everyone in Davidson County will come along often? I don't think so. And last of all, do you think all the people who have hurt family members, neighbors, and friends because of their strong interest in this matter will apologize and ask forgiveness? I hope so, because I'm a victim, and I hope there's not a lot of people out there feeling like I do. Life is unpredictable and short. I personally want to thank the commissioners, please don't let this. Please don't let people's personal emotions, false information, and petty little complaints make your important financial decision for all the citizens of Davidson County. This isn't just for farmers, everyone will benefit, vote yes to the project, thank you.
I'm Mark Newshaper, lives fifteen sixty-nine eighteen Hundred Avenue. I worked off a farmer in nineteen eighties, A D B Enterprise Candace for our product lines, it's, uh, two thirty two Sarah. And the past, past four years, there's been a lot of information from that, there's been declassification. A lot of our history has been hidden from us, there's other, other means for free electricity. There's been, been a lot of other, uh, civilization, fire dust had free electricity by using mercury. And, uh. Elements that's still left out is, uh, Asia, it's a fifth element that's left out. We have, we have free electricity that's everywhere. One of the problems I see with the wind farms, it's, it's totally dependent on, on wind power. There's, uh, geoengineering patents that's made by, eighteen ninety-one. That field rainmaker was making rain in nineteen fifteen. There's record books in California where he broke them out, he had twenty-eight, thirty inches rain. Nineteen forty-seven, Project Cyrus come along to root for the first hurricane, General Electric. Vietnam War come along, Operation Popeye increased the precipitation by fifty percent. They extended the monsoon season by thirty to forty-five days. In nineteen sixty-two, Al Gore Jay in a speech said, he should control the weather, controls the world. JFK even spoke to the United Nations panel about weather control. So I see that these winter farms are vulnerable to the weather conditions, like what we've seen in Texas, where they have a lot of freezing temperatures in there. Currently, the hurricane problem has been a floor that's ongoing right now. Geoengineering is man-made, making make and break economies with weather control. And the information's out there, electricity's used in the deep underground military bases. Guy's name's Phil Schneider, he's an engineer that did all these deep underground military bases. Hundred thirty-one of them worldwide, connected all our rail systems. And they use electricity, you know, as pedal system as well, why? There's a lot of stuff, research stuff, there are people don't believe it, but you go back to Operation Popeye of Vietnam War. We don't believe in geoengineering, or whether they can control the chemtrails.
Thirty seconds.
Just remember, they use Agent Orange to say any time as they control the weather.
My name's Marty Boyd, and the, you maybe six, you, you got weather in the middle. Many people have concerns, including the little, it absolutely no sense around you and your brother. Another reason to stop coffee at office that Karen's been no longer has a hospital. Navarre is in the middle of the family where E M S park, when other E M Ss are out on the fault. This is happening for a long, as I can hear, Navarre is surrounded by winter vines on the proposed net. Not only will citizens have issues with G nine one one, how will they reach out to E M S? Parked in the water, and they have to move. Do you? Will we all mouth every word of the safety of citizens in Davidson County? What if your family needs help? What if that getting food is, if you know anything about the front lines, fine, it doesn't miss.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Is there anybody else that had a notification appearing that would like to speak? All right, if not, we are going to allow Nell to answer. Remind, we've got one more.
My name's Stell Terry, and I have a property in a million rich and cityville. And I'm here to express our support. It's about that. I've been a toto with the wind in the Jeep for decades, and really have hoped that it would come soon in the Keystone Lifeline, that's just why. I'm scared of the, uh, the heat that they might have, which would damage our aquifer, and certainly attacks in the more, more than part of the state. I do not like solar energy for this area, because I'm a farmer, and so all the farmers would be making votes if they had that. There could be some competition for it, and I don't think, I think wind is the way to go. I do was very happy with the paperwork that we all sent out last week. We walked into the door, and I read it, and was pleased with the fact that I was working, but you hadn't done your homework. I'm leaving an education, and I didn't think you did your homework. And you did, uh, taught, and then all before meeting, which I figured you would. Yet you stood to know that some of my questions were answered in those shirts. And even some of the comments I heard this evening, I wish they had reread that, because they were covered in that weather. I was born and raised on my family farm, or in the house, and with my siblings. I was twelve, age of seventeen, when I left for college. I graduated from college at the age of twenty with my first degree, and lived in four cities in two different states for three years. I came home, uh, because it is home. And I'm a former farmer, I see that too many of my city friends are buying properties out in the country. I don't blame you for wanting a piece of our pot, but I do regret that they are taking more and more of that away from the farm. What is nice about the middle of this project is that we can still farm around, and I'm pleased about that. I was worried about decommissioning, you've covered that in your paperwork, how can you do that? I believe in people, and I believe that if you negotiate correctly, any problems in the future can be solved. If you know about conflict negotiations. And, uh, I think there may be some scientific project in the future that says we made a mistake. But I think most mistakes can be solved if you just work together. Every single day, science changes. And if climate change is real, I feel an obligation to make the world a better place before I die.
Time.
I have less time with you.
Time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, what you can do is, if there's no other further public comment, then just go ahead and close the public hearing portion of yet. There's no other public comment, I'm going to officially close that.
It's, it's your meeting, Mr. Chairman.
We're gonna officially close the meeting, or sorry, not meeting, the public comment. We're going to allow Nell to answer questions that were given to them. I'm sorry, I closed it already. We are going to allow Nell to answer any questions that was brought up by community and the county.
Chairman. Our body is for the property or health of the state employees and health of energy. The contractors, you have to, you have to find. That's, that's for the board to determine, that's for the board to determine.
Grandline.
All right, I want to start by saying, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this whole process going on for, uh, quite a part of almost three years. Doing regulations and, we're done. Yeah, all right, I remember. So, all right, you guys are the thank you department, okay? Uh, so there's still a lot of constantly, I've got a couple of pieces, if I missed any, uh, addressing this, I apologize, but. They, they got basics up here, so some of this stuff was already covered in the presentation, but I think it's, we're running over again, so. I wanted to start out with the intended domain, that is something that's against laws, been in places two thousand and six, it's built in two three, you know, please. We cannot invoke use of the domain, everyone assigned to the project also voluntarily. We, uh. We offer, like I, like I said last week, we offer lawyers to review, uh, and we reverse those statements if they are forward, comfortable, book exciting. I guess we don't tell people not to talk about what their lease agreements are, they're all listening. You guys are gonna, you know, you're gonna talk, it's nothing secret or backdoor about that process, so. For, for those who get a lease, you already know, uh. The decommission bond, road payments bond, that is all stuff that, that the events, that the company go belly up for some reason, or run up the funding, or whatever. All that's already covered, and money is in place per regulations of the county. That is what we submitted as a plan, as part of what we have to do, so that is a non-achieved, no matter what. Whether we sell out another company or go bankrupt, money is there to decommission this, or finish building roads. I like, I wanted to talk a whole more time, because that is, that is against a state tax exemption, that we voluntarily pay for, of course, ten years of the project, that's a three amount money that we have of, of the county, and those payments. Once we agree, we've made those payments, or not, that is a requirement, we make those payments. Just wanted to clarify that, um. Sorry, okay. Let's see, uh, one of the ones, when it runs running out, they have, these are, these are wind generators, meaning they just. They just produce electricity. They don't need to always be turning. There's no gas infrastructure with a plane burning at the top or something. People start up running, that's what I'm trying to clarify. That's not the use of these, they're strictly for wind generation. Some of the other comments, I mean, if you, if you don't like the motor turbines, you just don't like the motor turbines. That's just all there is to it. A lot of people in this room, a lot of people that live in the county yourself here, they can see them, they can talk to them. You notice those things anymore, you think about it anymore. Raise your hand if you were looking at the power lines, just distribution lines going down the street as you were driving. I know, I used to, you can see it perfectly. Don't think about it anymore. The blinking lights, that is the Kansas State law, they can pass this next year sometime, it might be late 22. Volume projects require lighting detection system. So at night, the tower lights stay off unless it's air crackers in the air space, the window lights. So the night, you're not going to see those whole projects. Maybe you're rushing better or left the way they are. It's almost a wall of time. Old Bridge would have that. And it would be using that lighting detection system. With the subways that we have with this project, two times since hip height, whoever that called hip height, it's a big. I just wanted the non-participants to know that it's not affecting your land use at all. I mean, fear that this is a way through the edge of the property. Artists of what sound levels is there to be. And there are no restrictions on what you choose to do with your property. You don't have to agree with those, you don't have to agree with your. You can do whatever you want of it, it's your land. And that kind of brings me to one of my main points is this is. This is land usage, right? This is, the people that live in this county, they pretty much do what they have to do. And I'm asking you to rent 1% of that land to put into the infrastructure. And not only provide assistance to the landowners and stakeholders in the project, not just the ones that get turbines, but also the ones who are inside the book. There are different payment setups for everything. Not only say there were 75 cars, we said by getting by. It's not how it works. There's all kinds of infrastructure based on acreage. Your eventually something part of the project, we want to be involved in. This money, not only benefits the county, it also helps the individual landlord to stay away from things like institutional ownership, foreign ownership of land. You want to talk about keeping, keeping your way of life, keeping related to your family and be able to pass on and make a legacy. There's been something to stop this. We were talking about the 68 million that is going to the county. This is, that's the big ticket to the people that are not the direct stakeholders in the project. You will see benefits from that line. Because that's what the county is going to be responsible for. For few health things that were brought up, we've done sound analysis, communication study. That includes the radar and the TPI, that's microwave. Anything that disrupts cell phone, we can burn cell reports. There's no impact of presence of this farm in the terrain and the communication towers. That's how they're analyzed, we did for a project. Just one quickly, turbines only tend to be underground, so it's all there. So I haven't seen any studies of their operation causing earthquakes. But we're talking about something essentially 60 feet wide. That's scratching the surface of something we'll have to consider. We're not. I just have no studies on that that I can version of that. This is reality, that is a very, very shallow.
Thank you. And again, Dr. Slia, I would just appreciate the opportunity to speak because we were listening to all of the presentations till last Thursday and then this Thursday. And so we didn't have a chance to confer. I do want to talk a little bit more about some of the things that we heard today, just to give some clarification. First, a question first, quicks. Can we bring back, in fact, put together an induced toxicity task force to determine the source of where the earthquake is happening? Yeah, I too was, felt my question was quick. I always assumed I would have to be a help to do it. And I felt one here again, which is kind of wild. It was never determined that they've had any effect on those. Those are from underground injection wells, class one. Sorry, coming up the nerd door here, but here we go. Since it was ready, so those were class one to underground injection wells. Not even really from fracking. It's from, you take the saltwater disposal from oil and gas, which is class two underground injection wells. And then under, and then past one wells, which are just disposal wells. And actually, this is pretty hard to reach a large volume of liquid that they have to dispose of. Cannot go down the river until they send it down after the wells back. What was creating use size. So I will, to the extent possible, keep my comments this way. There is a, the Kansas Geological Survey has a repository of all of the Kansas Operation Commission of all wells in Kansas. Over 100,000 load of gas wells and then, of course, the associated underground 103 wells.
The public hearing has been closed.
And next one on the health study. It was a preference that Douglas County was considering a non-autory health study. To mind that, I don't know if Douglas County implemented any aspect of that study in the final regulations that they put together. To my knowledge, no other company in the state of Kansas has included any non-autory study, largely because of the inclusive results. But then I would also say, if Douglas County was considering it, it would be interesting because the speaker said that they were recommending a three mile setback in Douglas County adopted the setback with less than 20% of that. So again, just trying to give you the full spectrum of what's going on across the state of Kansas. And then finally, on the tornado Doppler radar again. Seconding the comments that were made before, Jeremy Goodman, and you are welcome. If you guys know him, to call me, call him and mention my name, because he and I are friends. We have talked about this issue of Doppler radar and the impact of wind turbines. There are certain very limited instances where they can sometimes influence Doppler radar. But it is very rare. And they are studied, and most projects, as John mentioned, were studied for that impact. All of the studies are connected to the print delivery. So finally, good, I can say thank you to everyone. These are all those great exercises of that process. Thank you in particular to you who are, this is an unpaid position. You are volunteers. Some of you may have even been involved in whole, like, decommissions. You should serve on a grant and zoning commission. And this is difficult to watch the community have a very real and raw conversation. But we appreciate being part of it. And just a reminder to everybody in this room that this comes at the end of your own county and your county commission adopting these regulations. And so the question really is, does the application that comes in front of you satisfy the regulations that you, as a county, through all of the public meetings required, have adopted those regulations with the long-term county plan in mind? Does that application satisfy those regulations that you live within? So despite the rigorous debates, both for and against, we have sort of talked about some of the health effects and other things that were brought up. But I can also say to the wonderful proponents that set up, it is not likely that you will bring back free partnerships of hope or inheritance, maybe more bars. But it is not likely that we will fundamentally alter the trajectory of a lot of these dual places. But that's not the question that's in front of you as a planning. The question is, does the application that we are putting forward satisfy the regulations that your county commission has adopted?
You can, we're going to take a small break. Reconsume meeting at 5:30. Everybody could take their seats. We're going to resume meeting. I'll hand it over to you, Tim.
Okay. I have a question that was brought up. Not brought up, but a comment that Nell mentioned last week. And I just needed clarification from John before his group for just a moment. The question that I had for you is, you had mentioned that, because we have a, as a condition on the wind farms, total height and not to exceed 500 feet. And you had mentioned something about that's difficult to do. But my, I have a technical question for you. The Diamond Vista project. I learned from my colleague down south, the towers are actually 492 feet. And what is the difference between 2019 and now? That would justify you raising those to the range that you're wanting to do. Because 492 feet in 2019, I'm just curious what's changed.
Okay. Take a second. Yeah, so 2018, we put those actually 3.15 megawatts, which is smaller than what we're following for this project here. There are a couple of models that we're looking at for this project. So with the smaller mega watt size towers, you end up getting smaller overhaul type towers. The rotors are larger, larger, bigger machines. So I know it didn't seem like that long ago, 2018, but that's a, as far as the progress of wind, six years is kind of a long time. So in another year from now, we actually figure out what turbines we're going to concede to this project. I can't even get those towers right now. Just so you know, definitely not good to get. Maybe very long with the mention of it. It's progressive question, the sizes, the mega watt size and things back and forth.
Okay.
That's why, that's why people find my page on something.
Okay. The other question that I have for you is, you know, I mean, from an administrative standpoint, for my, for my department, when I, because you're going to have to come to me. If this gets approved, you would have to come to me to get building permits for each of those turbines. Can you guarantee that there won't be a change between what you're proposing now as the range? And suddenly the tower height increasing when you apply for a building permit?
You're talking about the original 657, that's an application.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. We won't be going over the rear requests and go over that overall tip.
Because the reason I'm saying that is because, yeah. If there's any aspect, I just want you to understand, any aspect of what you're proposing that would require a variance, a variance after approval of a conditional use permit is going to be very difficult to acquire, in fact, probably would be denied. Just letting you hold up.
Yeah, that's why I called, I saw a study about that one last week. The live operations performance, this is how the industry is. And this is a big market right on the side. They can't get short of this.
All right.
Yeah, just deliberate with, you know, if you have any questions.
Have any questions down there?
I'd like to clarify. So you're saying 500 feet, that's it. It's not more than that, it's a no-go. That one you're proposing?
Yeah, that's right.
What changes between 500 feet and 657 feet? As in, if you were applying for this 500 feet, is that? Because I did some research and I found now, I don't know if this is a different type of wind turbine, but I did some research and I found through Vesta's, they have a 4.2 megawatt turbine with a blade length of 57 meters. And that's like 100, I don't know, I can't remember, it's like 180 feet. And then the hub size was around 190. And that came to about 490 feet tall. Now, and there was a 4.2 megawatt, I don't know what the megawatt is for the ones you're looking at. Want to know what changes as in like decibels, the megawatt size, all that, when you go from 500 feet or less to 657 feet.
So part of our debiligence is we have that towers on these sites for at least one year, in this case, like five or six. That, those towers collect information, what speeds are varying heights, and then those are models. So using that modeling, you can determine where the optimum height is, hub height, which means it's just the dead center of the hub. Is what the hub height is, something overall height of the tower. Boy, obviously, it's not beyond that. We determine where those are at, and really, really windy places, those are paid towers. You don't see a lot of those anymore, especially for larger machines. Again, the rotors are so big, they're all sitting close to the ground. Diamond Vista, those are 95 meter towers. You will see, I see 105 pound 10 meter hot ice. So those are very, depending on the region of that tower, it's a pack. What that resource was, what height that resource is at. We also just want to, it's not, it's not much in the bucket, but just even that 657 gives us plenty of options to pick the most economical turbine that you can still get. Most megawatts, maybe two, three, four, we have for the project. And you say anytime now. There's a lot of people who don't use turbines and they're not made anywhere. So having options certainly helps with being able to construct this project.
No, no public comment.
I guess one other question that I have, I know you've been in contact with the FAA and you've gotten everything done for all the turbines and locations. Have you, and this was brought up last week, have you been in contact before rather? Because we do have flight path for helicopters in this area.
Yep, so all that, we coordinated, we filed for the application that they throw about some of that. Not necessarily where we're proposing turbines, but just geographically, kind of what high points are in the area. But it's something that kind of creates a whole box, the area where you're going to be. They take that information and they reach out to all the different agencies, department of that. So we don't actually reach out to court, writing a record, FAA knows that they didn't conduct that. Or we did some meeting with them and talked to them about that. That's not the process is. The last, I see, is part of our commitment to be able to just get it all clear. And just confirming whether overall height of the turbines are going to be as long as we're all of the towers. So it's pretty difficult to what responses are back to that. And once we, once we determine that, all of the information that we just received, we're proposing our term.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
No, no comment, please.
All right. What would you guys, what do you guys have, you have to discuss?
Kelly, here you go, it's on.
If there's any questions for that?
Okay, Tim, with, just if we would move forward, I know we had some suggestions, like I know in our stuff that was on here today about birds, and they are good, if they wanted additional stuff to add, just slight changes to some things, and then, you know, the number, I guess, it would be 40. What would that look like if we, you know, we have recommendations to move forward? Should we do that, that are laid out, how would that change, will we need to verbally, you know, those are kind of?
Well, what, what you would do is, I'm assuming you're talking about any modifications to the conditions that were already placed on my conditions? Then what you would do is you would just make, you would just make a recommendation to modify those conditions that you think would be appropriate.
Be laid out and ironized?
Right.
And that would be something that we all probably?
Right, that would be something you all would have to discuss, yeah.
Tim, should we move forward with this, on this designation of adjacent Miami zone, is that coordinated? Would that change?
No, no.
Tim, I've got questions on, somebody was proud to talk about flight, implying how that could be hazardous. I don't know, did we have any testimony from a crop duster? They said there's no impact to adjacent property, both their farm ground. Will crop duster, is he okay, you know, weaving between those towers, there's, you know, two and a half time setbacks, you know, 1,000 feet or whatever. 1,000 feet, I'm just wondering, what does that look like? Do we have any, have you got any feedback?
I've not got, I, I've not received any feedback at all from, from crop dusters. But, you know, I mean, that would be something that you, you know, if you want to investigate or whatever, you can, but I'd.
It seems to me that that would potentially be impactful for neighboring crop ground. I'm not a pilot, so wouldn't be happy about that, but it seems that would be important for the neighboring to consider.
Kelly's got more.
I guess if you brought that up, I consulted the grounds to compensate. And the first thing is more in southwest Kansas, and I asked them, was there a difference in application rates? And they said, no, there was no difference in application rates. I talked to a crop duster who has flown a pasture for me in my fields, he's flown, and he said, as long as the tower's being in the field, it's not, it's no good deal. The big deal is on the curves within a wind farm, if that's longer, we gotta be more careful. His comment was, his comment to me was, we should charge more for being in there, but most of the farm ground that we've come across, they're not getting lease payments, so we can't do that, and I'm not saying that in the future, they're going to be there for charge. Which tells me it's time on task, because he said it does take longer to fly within a wind farm. So to me, that's, that's it, it's time on task, everything starts with.
Okay, Martin has a question.
I think he's got him on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Martin.
This is Martin Snyder, asking a question. With this question, what's this question would be for Anell? I'm asking, I'm asking Anell, who's already in the decommission plan. And what I'm asking is regarding the disposal of the wind turbines themselves, the fiberglass. Do you have a plan, a proof plan on how they are to be disposed of currently?
Okay, so with the turbines, like, you know, the majority of the tower is recycled material, the fresh smell's stable, you know, steel towers, that kind of stuff. When it comes to the blade, the fiberglass is a place. And now, other leaders of the industry are looking for solutions for the disposal of those plates, besides taking up land at landfills. So we partnered with the Compos to study these things, and build it, things that break down with fiberglass. One of the best ones that we have right now is currently fiberglass for concrete additives. It's just, it's a, it's a part of the industry, and if we want to do as freely as possible, and so we want to recycle every bit of that turbine at the end of the cycle. So this specific decommissioning plan, there's nothing about recycling any of the plates, but it is something that we're committed to doing, and we're not the only one in the industry who's sitting on it.
I've got another question, I suppose it's for Anell, but, you know, one of the things we're going to consider is the reputation of the company as far as whether or not that's a good, you know, a huge value for Dickinson County. And in this agreement, obviously, on one page here, a reasonable time. Who defined reasonable time? Three material violations, what's a material violation, define it, another place, almost the same page, reasonable time. Confirmed violation, what's a confirmed violation? Who confirms that? Third party rules in here, it definitely.
You. James, James, I'm sorry, DeAndre.
Undetermined things within one page, I just go to page, 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 I highlighted. And I think about the testimony we had, that there's something going on in Oklahoma, where you've been asked to decommission a, decommission a set of towers. And it hasn't happened behind the store, and then I read all of these undefined components in here that allow lots of wiggle room for you and for us, I suppose, but how do you, how do you address that almost unlimited wiggle room on time, finding things after the fact? So there's no surprises for the county, for the county citizens, especially when it comes around decommissioning, 20, 30 years down the road. Again, you said that putting it up, just the labor frames and that kind of thing, was between 90 and 105 million. If we go down the road 30 years, that could easily be 300 million, and again, we're not talking about the asset itself. We're talking about the labor, the frames, the trucks, certainly when they take them off, they can torch the gold off, they can torch them, that would save some time, I get that. But the bond for decommissioning is how much, Tim?
The bond is, at this point, not fixed, we're still, because of the.
What I originally thought about 3 million, I could be wrong, but I'm thinking it, I mean, just guessing, that it may need to be a $300 million bond, I mean, I don't know that.
It's, again, again, this is, what you would have to look at in terms of reputation of the company.
Right, and that all.
Has to do with whether or not they had, I would say, like, shown good faith effort to at least have a decommission agreement. And have they agreed to those things? Yes. And the details of those are going to be worked out, okay? There's not anything that you can make a recommendation on those values, because those values will ultimately change anyway, and you're really not authorized to make those kinds of recommendations anyway. The main thing you want to look at when you talk about economics, with related and reputation of it now, would be are they going to, have they shown good faith effort in, you know, considering pilot agreement, road maintenance agreement, all those things.
And also, in addition to thank the nation, we talked in here about what we need to consider with previous projects. Well, again, we're back on that thing about Marion County, and we had testimony that the pilot payment was going to be this amount in the, in the the application was this amount, but after, what we were told, and what we have rec, come up with record of it, that after seven months of negotiating that pilot payment, they, they were told by their attorney, just kind of decided we're not going to get any better, so it was reduced, is what we were told, and then when the first pilot payments came in, you guys told them to go get your own engineer, do your own study, we'll pay for it. But when the first pilot came in, you clawed back, sitting on under 150,000 the first three years, which is half a meal short of a half a million bucks before you got up to actually paying the pilot payment. So again, I go back to that item here about, you know, we're supposed to consider the company's reputation, but they can consider previous projects. And what's supposed to go on is the testimony we have, that we have to look at here. And, and I don't know how to address those unknowns, I don't know how to address the testimony we had, that you jacked them on the pilot payment. And I don't know how to address the fact that the decommissioning could be 300 million, and that's not defined. So how can I vote in favor of something, but I have no idea what that's going to look like when you get down the road? That makes sense?
Again, the question that I have is, have they submitted a pilot agreement? Yes. Have they submitted a road maintenance agreement? Yes. Have they submitted a decommissioning plan? Yes. The details of each of those, the monetary values, are not something that you are authorized to consider. But what you can consider is the reputation of the, that's not something that, because they are subject to change anyway. You can't recommend this amount because it's subject to change anyway, and you don't have authorization to do that, or a land use board. And so when I say reputation of the, of the company, have they shown good faith effort, and showing outreach? And all of the, and as well as showing good faith effort in their agreements, and willingness to, you know, enter into agreements that are going to have dollar amounts that won't, you know, even if you did write the recommendation, they're going to change in two years because the two years of when they start construction, if this goes into the approval, so I'm just saying.
I do want to comment on the agreement simply too. I'm not familiar with all those details on Marion, I've got Greg, if we can have a little more, see if I can like, help ease mine. The attempt, and what we did with the RMA, that's coming up with the, with the price of the third party engineer based on the schedule itself. That we're, you know, that we're reimbursing the down and forth, and then a pilot is something that is that was negotiated rates back and forth over a period of time, like we paid on a dollar amount of it. So Marion County was a little special case, since I wasn't there, Greg wants you to explain some of the details of that.
If you don't mind, Chair, I can bring you some of the attorneys that assists in all these processes, we work with your staff the last couple of years, putting on the regulations. The decommission agreement, I want to speak to, which has come because when, when the tip says there's no dollar number, that's because before a building permit came to issue, with that agreement, the third party independent engineer familiar with the wind industry, industry, who knows what it will cost to decommission them on day one, is hired by the county and paid for by us, will come up with that number. And if that's number 100 million, 300 million, 500 million, unless a bond is posted at that amount, that's in the county, no building permit issued. And then five years later, the county hires another, the same one or another one, to say, what's the change over that five years? And whatever number that third party engineer that the county hired and paid for comes up with, the bond has to be that amount in that five years, or the CUP can be pulled. But that's how you enforce it, that's why they've got a number like now, because we're not the point where that, the county's third party engineer said it's going to cost $100 or $500. As soon as the engineer says that, then we have to close that bond, and we don't get building. So this is locked, the CUP is locked for the construction for that, for this project. That's like the stage is along the way, and the county has to pull over that. So it's a good question of the decommission, David, you need to make sure, as the landowners who have that same decommission, like in their contract, know that the money is there, and if it's not there in bond, there's no building permit to be issued right now.
And what the planning commission as an, an option for the decommissioning plan, I have down as, as a, I'm recommending, there's a recommendation of five years. You all can change that to every three years if you want, or modify, you know, to say, okay, every three years have it looked at. So those, those are the kind of changes that you can make as far as dollar amounts, that's, you know, those aren't, they're.
So we're premature on the dollar.
Right.
Okay, my question, actually, is for Tim Hammington. Regarding good faith on behalf of Anell, he provided a pilot agreement, they provided a, a decommissioning agreement, and they have provided, they will make this agreement, correct?
Correct.
What I'm a little confused on, Tim, is I believe it's in the road maintenance agreement that we're talking about TransCanada. It's a, it's a letter from Paul Allen.
Right.
Talking about TransCanada.
Right, definitely.
If this is good faith, what are we doing with TransCanada?
Doesn't draft, and that's a, what it is, is what you receive was a draft. And TransCanada is, I believe, what we had, what you can receive in your packets, there was probably details that we kind of cut and pasted from the old TransCanada agreement that we're using, and that's where the TransCanada comes from. That would be corrected when it goes to the, before it goes to the county commission.
It's with the county commission.
And it's with the county commissioners, they are the ones that consider the road maintenance agreement, not us.
So if I could go back to the pilot payments, I know we talked earlier, John, last, a week ago, and you said the pilot payment was 668, it wouldn't change. Because the question was that 668 is determined by X amount of kilowatts times the dollar amount, and that's how that 668,000 pilot bank per year for 10 years is determined, correct?
Yeah, dollar amount of megawatts.
Good work. And so the question was asked, what if, what if one less tower comes in, and, you know, a few less, three or four less megawatts? Then does that equation change, and does the pilot payment go down, and you said it does not, at 668, whether it's one power or the number of powers you're estimating, is that correct?
Yeah.
And the reason I ask that is because Tim, this D on page 104, 110, 104. And the reason I ask that is because James, this D on page 104, 110, 104, Michael, 700, 100. But the only pilot payments that spilled out in year one, 668,000, the others all have $2,000 in there. So again, maybe, maybe that's going to be like the TransCanada hotline stuff that got put in. Maybe that's going to be a draft, but it doesn't shy of what we said a week ago.
Is that the paper? Is that a little bit of the?
Right. I can show it to you in our application.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, I would direct the planning commission to kind of get on to the issue of land use, whether this is an appropriate use at all.
Tim, I'm going to take exception to that because all of this determines whether or not it is a good use of this county land, whether this is.
But James, the county commission is the elected board and they are the ones that negotiate this contract. This planning and zoning board does not have the authority to do that. You're not elected.
It's not in your, your buy box.
You're talking about land use.
You're a land use board.
If I have a question back to the.
Okay.
One year exhibit showed a 10 B to a pilot agreement. It's the 334 megawatts times the $2,000 per megawatt is installed. It's not generated. So whatever is installed, that was just a methodical number. That comes to the six. 668. So that is a fixed number installed or not, whether you generate less than that in a year, that doesn't change anything. And I think it has to be negotiated with the county purpose. So I think, well, if we'll make sure I've drawn it to you correctly, that number is. Not on how much is generated.
It's on what's installed.
Correct.
But if less is installed, would that be less then? Or if there's one less tower installed, five less towers installed, six extra towers installed, would that number be there possible?
We cannot install extra towers before we eliminate them. There's no efficient, it's all fewer than what we have. I see the point. If you did install one less. Potentially, that was a math map and a way to get you a number to pay the county.
But again, it's an agreement with the county commission and that's what would be binding.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
You talked about limit to 500 feet.
Yes.
And meanwhile, says that will not work for that. So is there, I guess, a move to raise the height of the tower?
That would be up to you all. The, the, the conditions placed on it would be, you know, I, I, my recommendation would be 500. But if they, you know, convinced, you know, that if you're convinced that they'll need to go up higher or, you know, then that's fine, but you can keep it at 500 if you want. But it's just up to you.
Hey Tim. Tim, can you repeat what you were talking about on that decommissioning and you were talking every five years?
Yeah.
Or three?
Every, yeah, you can, it's right, Kyle, it's every five years to negotiate the value of the bond or the amount paid. And you can, you can modify that to whatever year you want. So three years typically is either three or five is what most counties do.
We just can't do the payment, the amount they pay.
The amount, right.
We can just say they do it every.
Every, every. So many years, yeah.
So every three, every three to five years, the decommissioning plan would be reevaluated.
Right. So right now, right now it's fixed. It's a recommendation fixing it to five. But you guys have the authority to say, okay, let's make it every three years to reevaluate.
I guess I have another question on the decommissioning contract. We within realms to ask if a contract for a landowner, if this goes through, if their contract is not withheld by an L after maybe the first 10 years, the applicant is allowed to decommission that wind turbine at the cost of an L or if they get bought out by that company. And it does not come from our pilot program for the bond, or do we have the ability to do that?
That would be a, a business decision, basically, you know, for between, you know, the property owner and the developer. Yeah.
But we can't put that.
No, no.
Tim, since you're talking about the power high 500 versus 657, and all of them actually begin with setbacks, are they figuring on 500 foot tower or 31 or 657?
All, all their setbacks are based off of the, what they proposed, which is the 650. And so, yeah, and so that's, you know, or that range of, but they, they won't know for sure until they said, and I would let them explain why they, they gave that range. But I said, it's, at this point, the setbacks would meet, they've already said that they would meet those setbacks, whatever they might be, you know, regardless of the height. I think it's one, one and a half times the distance from a property line and so much from other residents.
So I've heard one and a half and two times the power.
Right, right.
I mean, one and a half times 500, which is two times 650.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the one and a half for sure is the, the amount that KDOT had informed me that they would like to see. And that's they're recommending a one and a half from their right of ways, the KDOT right of ways. But we can exceed that if we want.
The twos were non-participating.
That's right. Yeah. Non-participating gives the two. Yeah.
Okay. So it's three times the 657. That would be based on the actual.
Right. It was part of that.
Mine, I want to come back to KDWP that you guys had filed for, which I appreciate that. We do have the Teegashiners, as you guys have said in the report, or Teegashiners around and the grayberry chicken. I would like to, when we get to this point, I would like to keep the three mile recommendation from those lands that if they are within our boundaries, I want to keep that that the KDWP recommends.
Okay. Just make a note of that. And then when you make your, if, if you make a motion for that, then it's.
Sorry, that's abuse. Can you say KDWP requires three miles?
They don't require, but it says recommends to the, let me find it real quick. It says avoid placement of turbines within three miles of KDWP managed wildlife areas to, well, I'm on my wrong page. I'm sorry. We've also noted one historic greater prairie chicken, lack within project area and others within three miles of the far southern extent of the project area. But at the end here on a bullet point, it says avoid placement of turbines within three miles of KDWP managed wildlife areas to minimize the potential for impacts wildlife using those areas.
Yeah. Impact. That in my, what I saw from that, that impact, that refers to the land that is, the great prairie chicken is all.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And just to.
To, I'm not privy to that letter, but I think there's two, definitely two things. Those are KDWP managed areas because this would be, I'm going to use my own screen to make it. KDWP owned lands around Knoppus, like for example. And then they also mentioned there's a great prairie chicken left here. I don't know where that is, that that could potentially be on private. Again, not having that other requirement, it does not appear that they're recommending any sort of additional. The three miles only in that standard, we don't interact with KDWP processing. They would ask developers to stay in these three miles of KDWP managed.
So as, as our plan too, once we know where our court orders are, we can propose that too. We can recite all this part of the project.
There's some property on the national historical registration. We've got testimony, received testimony on. Is it within our purview to, you know, just like we had the ability to go through year, five year, two year to decommission plan or whatever. And we've got the ability to look at the items you were mentioning. Do we have the ability to look at the area around that farm set is on the national historical registration? Do we have the ability to look at that and say we want to keep back a certain distance from that? Or, or I don't know where that's at.
Normally, normally you would consult with, even though it's on the national register, because if it's on the national register, it would be state of Kansas as well, Historical Society. But, you know, so unless there's like some documentation, the Kansas Historical Society making a recommendation, you know, for something like that, then you could. But at this point, if it's, you know, usually what people will do, what counties will do is they'll just consult with state's guidance on that rather than the feds. And so if there's something that the state has that references that, then they can, we can, you can consider.
Another question, Tim, in the, you know, I don't like it, but in the pilot.
Go for it, James.
In, in the pilot agreement, it talks about, but once the pilot payment is established, then that also goes forward into the next project.
Right.
Now in the county. And so once that's established, it's set.
Right.
And so my question is, is that something that, that could be adjusted or changed?
Yes.
Okay. So, so we, it wouldn't necessarily have to be set. And here in perpetuity for phase two, phase three, phase four, that would be addressed secondly.
Right.
They're mutually exclusive.
Right.
Okay. This is for a mail. I appreciate the explanation on the the, the decommissioning bond. That really was new information. Appreciate that. That helps a lot. Would you be comfortable speaking to, can I ask this? Would you be comfortable speaking to the, what's going on or not going on in Oklahoma? I mean, that, that is a question that was something that someone brought up and.
I can, I do know something about that. It is an extremely complicated piece of litigation that went through the Supreme Court in the United States over Indian land rights and the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And whether or not, this is limited to the weeds, whether or not digging the foundations for the wind project that was approved on the renovation lands, prostituted mining with those on federal law, meaning that they had to get permission from the tribe and the different tribes to mine. And it went to this federal district court and then the Texas court, and then it went to the US Supreme. And finally concluded, the question was it didn't constitute mining because some of the material was removed from the area and sort of put back on the foundation. So it is a very, very issue of technical Indian land law and what it will end up doing, I don't know this. This is a leverage issue between how much is it a fee for my, for the wind turbine. And now that, I mean, nobody wants those torn down because they're still generating incomes. It's more an issue of legality than income. And one side now has a bigger movement.
And James, I spoke with one of the attorneys for the Indian Nation and it's exactly like Greg said, yes. They're in negotiations right now, but they don't want the turbines torn down because it has been a huge benefit to the community, to the schools, to the prime.
It's who, who gets the benefit basically.
This would be a whole lot easier if there was no attorneys involved.
He's sitting right next to me and I can say that, yeah.
Does anybody else on the board have anything they would like to ask? If not, we need to, we need to do some sort of motion. Nobody hear me?
Yeah.
Knowing that there will be discussion after a motion, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of this current project with the above referenced conditions in our pocket and consider a review of the current wind policy ahead of any future wind projects with the recommendation of a two-year moratorium. That is my motion. Oh, I also would like to add to my motion. Stating the, what my question was, there's so many things to add on to it. So the recommendations for that the Audubon of Kansas proposed, they had three recommendations in there. So that was stated in, I need to state these out.
Yes.
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 So Audubon of Kansas stated that they suggest a 1.5 mile setback from Eagle's Nest. So Audubon of Kansas stated that they suggest a 1.5 mile setback from Eagle's Nest and there was an area around 1600 for a private lake between whale and paint roads. I know you will do all of your due diligence, but I'm getting some writing. And also there are three proposed additions to the following conditions of the CUP. Industrial wind development and their associated transmission lines should only be allowed on already developed areas and not on areas of native tallgrass prairie, wetlands, or old growth forests. Only native seed or plants be used for reseeding. And we encourage Dickinson County to require environmental monitoring and reporting before, during, and following construction and to make the findings public. Then there will be discussion. Yes, I would like to add a three year. Instead of five, change that to three years for the decommissioning. All right. And that's the end. I'm going to end my motion. Let's discuss it and we can make another.
Has there been a second? Or is it, you're just going to discuss? No comment, please. Thank you. If you, if you don't get a second, then it just dies for lack of a second. You can make another motion or you can keep discussing.
But, uh, let's see. Hello? Hello? Hold on, hold on, Martin. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, Martin Schneider. Martin Schneider, um, I would like to make a motion and recommend denial. It's going to consider two-year moratorium on future wind energy projects until current policy can be evaluated. This motion's based on lack of a complete decommissioning plan and due to only drafts in the road maintenance and the pilot program. I see that directly affecting land use. And so I am asking for a denial at this time and a two-year moratorium.
Number four.
It has been moved and seconded to recommend denial and consider a two-year moratorium on future wind energy projects until current policy can be evaluated. And I don't remember what all Martin said, forgive me. Based off the decommissioning project and the draft on the road and maintenance contract. That was it.
Make a vote.
Sorry. Uh, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes for one. And Martin, sorry, six to one.
Tim, is there anything else that needs to be added?
Any, uh, only if, uh, you have any other questions. I think one, the only thing I've added is that, uh, we do not have any schedule for November at this point. And, uh, so no applications have been turned in. So, and it looks like December is going to be pretty too, so.
I just had a quick question for you, Tim.
Yes.
Um, based off of all this discussion and happening the way it is, fine. Um, my main question is, is we're told those aren't our, you know, we're not supposed to think about this. I know we need, need to keep them in mind, but, um, so moving forward, a project and a CUP application, um, you know, I know we're supposed to be in there. What can we do in the future to make sure maybe that doesn't impact our decision in such a large manner?
One of the things we're looking into is probably getting some training done. With you all just reminding, because I know a lot of you go back to when my predecessor's predecessor was here and she did, would do a whole really good job as far as informing you as to what you're supposed to do. And, uh, so it's a, uh, as far as how you, how you think like a planner. Okay. Uh, so, uh, what we'll do is just, we're going to look at some training, probably starting next year, uh, January, February. And, uh, get you guys up to speed with, because I know you've got, I've got three new members. And I know that when I try giving you, I try to give you your annual training, but really it's, it's, all it is, is just going over what we already know as far as conditional use of metals and all that sort of thing. But I think you need a more detailed uh, explanation, especially for the new members that have come on to understand how to think like a planner when you get these types of projects.
I would say one other thing, and I'm going to direct this towards the public. So please listen, with the years, staff has been great. Staff has not misled. Um, and maybe we also need to do just a little bit more, as much to our ability, education to the public so they are aware of some things. Because a lot of what we heard was repetition when everyone told not to repeat what was said previously in our public hearing. So that took a lot of time. Um, and then also just slinging stuff at staff and not being aware of the full story. And I know that's going to happen. Um, but I will not lie, last week I was not happy to be a resident of Dickinson County there for a moment. And I am, okay, I've moved back to this area and I do love it. This is way out, if I know, but just, um, maybe we need to do a little bit better of that in the future. Just a little bit more, um, education for everybody, um, so that we're aware of everything. And I know there are restrictions on what we can do, but I would like that as a commissioner so that it helps everyone moving forward.
Let the public know where this goes now. Uh, there has to be between, uh, tomorrow and 14 days from today. I, I can't give you the dates, but you have 14 days uh, to submit a protest petition. Uh, and after that 14 days, the county commission will consider this case at their next available meeting after that 14 days. And they, uh, that, uh, petition has to be signed. Uh, I should say individual forms that I have, uh, available to you if you want. Uh, but those, I need, uh, in order to have that overturned, uh, as far as, uh, like, let's say, if you wanted to keep it a, uh, uh, and let's say if somebody wants to, uh, record a model. Approval by the county commission would require a unanimous vote with the submittal of that, uh, those, that petition, of those petitions. So you and I would have to receive about 20% of the 500 that, uh, signatures that I, you know, notifications I sent out. So that would mean I would need like a hundred of those forms to submit to the county commission to make it. So that instead of it being a simple majority for them to, you know, overturn this, it would take a unanimous vote on their part to overturn or approve the, the application. So, uh, this is why I say this planning commission is a recommending body and the county commissions or commissioners are the ones that will make the final decision on this. So, if you need to get in touch with me, uh, and get, you know, if you want to submit a petition, uh, I'll have those available. If you stop by my office or I can email them to you. Uh, I got an email address and, uh, you can, uh, to the, at my office. Just email me and I'll email you a copy of what we've got and you can sign it and authorize it to go into me. And again, a hundred, I would need a hundred signatures within 14 days.
Tim, I have a comment to throw out. Uh, the training that you brought up about new members of the board.
Yes.
And none of us are too old that we can learn.
Right, right.
The point being is, is I think that's a grandiose idea, but on top of that, we were told many times during this hearing about you guys are getting too far down in the weeds. You can't ask.
That's, that's what I'm telling you.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that. What I am saying is, is, is a lot of the questions that James had is who's going to educate the county commissioners? Because that's what the public wants. Those questions is, is the county commissioners going to ask that? Because that's in their view that they can do that. But who's going to say, we would like to have this answer?
Right. And if you, but again, the, you are a land use board. And so what they'll do, what, what they will do is they will look at, you know, the recommendation. On the review criteria I outlined in the, in my staff report. And then they, they review that the same way you do. And then they'll, what they'll do is, you know, they're looking to you as a board for a recommendation as to, is this appropriate? Is this not appropriate? That's, that's all I can tell you.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second.
Is approved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please raise your left hand. All opposed, then sign. Pass.